And welcome. Our people will now come to water. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please may we have a moment to silence for our everybody who are in our services, and also for our police and our firefighters to protect us here in our community. Please be seated. We will move to comments by Department Heads, Village Administrator, and Council on agenda items. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything on the agenda. Just a couple items. There's been an update in one of the scams. The old phone call that your daughter, granddaughter, or grandson's arrested, and you need to post bail, and they tell the people to go to the bank. We had one the other day that when the person went to the bank, the bank personnel questioned why she was there, and then they realized it was a scam. So I just like to make sure people, you get a phone call like that, you might want to check with that family member, but they're talking about it and see if they're okay. Also, a couple for the rest. Alert residents on 1222 advises of some people hanging around by a mailbox on New Brook Road. And based on that information he gave us, we did an investigation, and we arrested two subjects, one from West Hempstead, one from Bronx. They're using a cool-like substance and going to the mailbox and pull out the mail. They also had seven checks that they intended to redo and rewrite for their sake. So it was a great job, but again, it was an alert resident that got us going on the investigation. And we also had one just recently the other day on John Street. Alert resident advises of a suspicious person in the area and going through the rear yard. We arrested that person for criminal trespass, and his attempt was to go to the shed to take a bite. So we thank the residents who were on their alert and they give us a call. We do appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan, could you mention something about lost vehicles as well? Locking in cars today?
Yes. It's county-wide or actually nationwide problem with the unlocked cars. We are also getting some calls where people try and do it, but we're getting less loss vehicles from cars of late because of the cars being locked. So we encourage that to be an ongoing trend of locking in vehicle. And there's been a rash in West Hempstead and also Midilla. So we always concerned and we work with those jurisdictions to help monitor that. But again, we ask if you lock your vehicle, you have a much better chance of not being lost.
Very good. Ms. Giavone.
Good evening, Mayor. I also don't have anything on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to give an update to the board as far as the digital scanning. Phase three is completed, or was completed two weeks ago, and we are working now on the overflow considering faith. With phase four of the overflow of other projects until we go live with Tyler.
All right.
So we are beginning to start the process with Tyler. We're going to our second meeting. And we have a meeting with them next week to do a second define as far as the software implementation.
In case of you, where are we on the sending the files out to people for their property?
The request folder is outside for those of you that need the request. But we are, we're in right now about July.
Okay.
July, August.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief Striscum.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda. I'd just like to remind property owners in the village that it's their responsibility to clean snow, if we ever get anything this year, for fire items in front of the property. In event of an emergency, a snow-covered hydrant will land time and place a post at the border with a potential fire. That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, Councilor B.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a scheduled public hearing this evening on a proposed local law that would expand the existing village code empowerment of the superintendent public works to regulate water usage in the event of a shortage of water. Unfortunately, due to an inadvertent emailing error, the clerk was sent an earlier version of the proposed law, a version which was subsequently amended. Unfortunately, because of the posting requirements for local laws, it will now be necessary to repost the correct version of the proposed local law and hold a hearing upon the proper draft on a different night. I will therefore be asking that this board cancel this evening's hearing and reschedule the hearing for the next board trustee's meeting.
Very good, so.
You can do that now or once the Department Head's comments are finished? It's up to you.
All right, you can do it right now.
If you wish to do so, is there a motion to cancel this evening's public hearing and to repost and reschedule the public hearing for the next board trustee meeting, which would be February 6th?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Trustee McRivers and seconded by Trustee Hyer. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it unanimously.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Defense.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items on the agenda this evening. Most significantly, item number five under village administrator. The village was awarded two grants recently. New York State awarded grants in term for water infrastructure improvements. The village had previously applied for these grants, and we were awarded almost $9 million worth of grants from the state in order to assist us in paying for the, covering the cost of the emerging contaminant work that needs to be done in the village. So this was good news for the program. And yes, the village board to accept the grants from the state.
If we switch technologies?
I don't believe it does, but I will follow up on that. In other words, if we switch to another, yeah, so just to expand on that a little bit. This afternoon, we kicked off another pilot program, a different pilot program over at Clinton Wellsite for a different type of treatment system. I had gotten some information about a new system that exists, and it was being piloted out in Suffolk County in Greenmore. I went out to visit that system to observe it and decided to pilot that program in our village. We kicked that off this morning. We had a big crowd there, a lot of members of the Health Department from Nassau County attended. We had some people from the Village of Hempstead's Water Department attend to look at this system. And we're going to be running that pilot program for next two weeks. System's different than the one that we have been moving forward with currently. The original system, AOP is called, Advanced Oxidation Process, has currently been approved by the Nassau County Health Department for use. This new system, AOP Plus, works under different technology, has not yet been approved for usage by the Nassau County Department of Health. I'm hoping after our pilot program, when we submit for approval, that they do approve it and allow us to use it. I think it's, I think this system would probably, in the long run, be a better system for the village to use.
Is it more expensive?
Well, the system itself is more expensive, but you don't need a lot of the peripherals that you need to buy for the other system.
Can you explain the AOP Plus?
So AOP Plus, so AOP Plus, the AOP system uses hydrogen peroxide. AOP Plus uses titanium dioxide, which is a, the hydrogen peroxide system would require large storage tanks, reoccurring deliveries of hydrogen peroxide. The titanium dioxide is a powder you can use about the size of a coffee can that would last a couple of years. So it's less reoccurring costs.
And then remove it.
And you don't, and it's, well, the Health Department verbally has said that, but until they actually get the test results and rule on it, we might not need an additional filtration system after that to remove the, whereas the other system, you need to remove the peroxide. This system not approved yet, but you might not need another system to remove the titanium dioxide.
And to get AOP Plus machinery or equipment, is there the same lead time?
Unfortunately, yes. It's, the company makes the.
Different maker, I think?
Yes, it is. It's the company, Kilparifex, which is actually right across the street from Trojan, which makes the other system. The people who developed this system were former employees of the company that developed the other system.
John, this is not approved. This has to go through the Department of Health.
That's correct. This pilot program we're doing now for about the next two weeks, we will submit the findings of our pilot program to the Department of Health for approval, and we'll go from there.
So this system is not approved. Did they approve us using the system? Or do they, or all pilot programs have just been done and they were approved consistently?
They have been approving them one at a time historically. That's what they've been doing. So, because each well site, the water quality is different in each well site. Some wells have different, for example, the Clinton Wellsite has elevated nitrate levels. So we have another well site that has elevated iron levels. So the treatment has different effects on the water.
So do they approve them side by side?
Yes, yes.
So have we placed an order for AOP plus?
We have orders in place, yes, for AOP system. Because as of now, it's the only system approved to use, and I need to move forward with this, with this work. But we don't expect delivery on those systems until April or May. So in the interim, if this system does get approved, I can cancel those orders and go with this system, so.
All right, Bert Tamski.
Also on the agenda tonight, items 10, 11, and 12, bid awards in regards to St. Paul's. We are awarding bid tonight for the vine removal to the low bidder at a cost of $49,965. That would be U Areas Corporation. We're also awarding the bid for the window protection. That's a party construction, the low bidder, at a cost of $39,400. And I am requesting to reject the bid for the stabilization project as we only received, we only had one bid for this project, and the cost came in at approximately $360,000 over budget. We're going to regroup with CNY, the construction manager for this project, and we're going to try to reword and kind of retool the bid and resubmit the bid and rebid this project again.
Hopefully, we get some good news on that.
How many, how many people went to look at the building?
We had a pre-bid meeting. I believe five or six companies actually did show up for the preview meeting to walk through St. Paul's, but only one bid on the project.
How did the other two come in relative to the bids, the pre-bids?
The $49,000, the estimates here.
I'm sorry, what?
The one with the vine removal and window protection. How did we go in on these relatives?
Same line, I understand.
Oh, yes, they actually both came in under budget. I don't have the exact numbers, but they were both under budget.
I believe that's all I have.
Very good. Mrs. Wob.
Thank you. Tonight on the agenda, I have item number one, which is just requesting to set the dates for the budget work sessions. We've kicked off the budget process with the Department Heads, and so we're currently working on that 2021 budget as we speak. Item number two is a correction of errors. We were notified by the village assessor that there are certain properties that require a change to their assessed value for the 2019 tax roll. There were certain properties that were incorrectly, their assessment was incorrectly increased due to building permit fees that were assigned to them, identified on those properties incorrectly. The reason that misidentification happened was because it was incorrectly assumed that the village's number that's used to identify lots, the map section and lot number, that there was a need to each property. But in certain cases, there are slivers of land that were shared between neighbors. And so when the permits were being charged to the property, they were using the identifier, which, you know, there are two properties with the same identifier. So in some cases, the wrong property was incorrectly increased. So this results in a few properties requiring a refund. That's a total of $18,686.77. There were also some clerical errors. So at the end of the day, those were the corrections that are required. We discussed with the assessor to, you know, not use the identifier any going forward and to just look at the property address on the permits coming forward. Item number three is a sundry write-off due to some damages to the village home. There were numerous efforts by the village clerk to collect on this, dealing with the insurance company. And based on hers and village council's recommendation, after so many months, the recommendation is to write off this now.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. We have nothing on the agenda this evening.
Nothing on the, okay. All right. We now turn to citizens, oh, Mr. Seleson.
The, oh, I know I have Chris Clowder. We have comments, Judge's comments.
Oh, okay, that's true.
It's okay if you want to skip me, Mayor.
I see.
I just want to say, first of all, there's a couple of employee, there's a compensation increases tonight. I want to thank the board for supporting these, the local employees are exceptional at their jobs. Great work for these fellows. I want to thank the board for supporting me. Also, I want to just double back on this. If you insist those, Esposito, the AOP and AOP Plus systems that we talked about, what you didn't say, which I think is important, but hoping to note that we are very, really out in front of this thing. Out of all the communities that face this problem online, some of them just started the AOP test to be completed according to our protocol. So we are now in the original pilot, already testing this system. That's on the cusp of approval hopefully. So I want to just thank Mr. Francisco, the legal team behind us and the boards for allowing us to pursue this so aggressively, because we really are positioning ourselves to deal with this emergency pandemic issue quite aggressively. Thank you.
Very good. All right, now we move to citizens' comments on agenda items.
No, the comments by the trustees.
Okay. Comments?
I have one.
Okay.
During our last meeting, we happened to have a work session which dealt with the situation of speeding and safety on Seventh Street. When we had the discussion, we had said that we had talked about it, and Mr. Francisco was supposed to come back with us with some recommendations. So I wanted to know what you were thinking as well.
So the conversation, the work session last being dealt with the corners by Leo's and French Workshop on.
And also Seventh Street, so.
Seventh Street, yeah. So well, we concentrated mostly on the intersections by Seventh and Franklin. We have bollards in stock in the village. We have installed them in other areas along Franklin Avenue. We are prepared to install them now to protect the citizens along the corner there and the residents who move down on the corners at Leo's and at the French Workshop. I do not, I am not prepared to speak about a study on the remainder of Seventh Street tonight. We're still working on that. But it's in progress.
Is it possible for you, maybe the board before we look to install an illustration of what it looks like and then where you would suggest the question?
Absolutely.
Give those residents some safety from the cars?
Absolutely. And that's actually something we can do in-house. That is, we've done this in the past. We have a new stock. We do need to order more. We don't have enough yet. So we're still waiting for delivery, take delivery of more bollards. So we have enough.
Okay. All right. And then as far as with the traffic on Seventh Street, the crosswalks or whatever, you guys will study that, and then hopefully at the first meeting, we'll agree on that.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I just thought, between Peter and myself, you can just give a two-minute summary of the two code sections. You want to do the, I guess I'll do the.
Should we do the code of ethics?
Code of Ethics. We actually asked our Board of Ethics two years ago to kind of start to look at the code of ethics. Like everything else, it takes time. We don't do this full-time. So we think we have a pretty good updated code of ethics. We just want to modernize it. It started with sort of state model for the code of ethics. Obviously, we changed it, tweaked it for our situation. We fully recognize we rely on volunteers, so it's hard to do everything straight line. But I want to thank former trustee Silver, Valerie Rothschild, and Judge Mathers for their input. And we think, John, I think we got a pretty good product. It's pretty straightforward. Peter's office helped us obviously. So we'd like to set that up for a hearing to get that approved.
Yes, trustee Ian, and as typically is the case, it will be done in the form of a proposed local law. This evening's agenda calls for this board to set it down for a public hearing, which presumably will be the next board trustee meeting on February 6th, at which time copies of the fund document will certainly be available and will have been posted on the website in advance. And citizens can certainly comment on saying. Similarly, there is a proposed local law regarding overnight parking. The existing village code sections were designed, I think, to deal with semi-permanent overnight parking for situations where the geography and topography of the residents didn't really allow for adequate overnight parking on an ongoing basis. And according, the clerk of the village in the code is authorized to issue permits, which this board does certainly annually and sometimes intermittently to residents who require that because of the construction of their home and the absence of driveway space. However, unaddressed in the code is the need for temporary permits, which sometimes happen when overnight guests exceed the number of people that would typically be accommodated by a homeowner's driveway. And the unofficial practice has made contact with the police department, which has set up some procedures for how to handle that. What this proposed local law will do is make that a little bit more formal and directly empower the police department to establish rules and regulations governing those overnight parking situations and limiting how long such overnight temporary situations can exist. So again, a copy of that local law will be posted on the website, and there'll be an opportunity for citizens to speak to it at the public hearing at the next board meeting.
Yeah, and we've talked about it here, and Kenny's mentioned, we've gotten complaints because we tried to do the right thing and let people do it online, and as usual, people abused it. So we are going to make that portion of it more formal.
But there are, of course, occasions where someone is having construction done and their driveway can't be used for a period of time. There are situations where people have a need for 24/7 care by an aide who needs to park overnight. There are extraordinary circumstances which sometimes exist in some locations. So to enable the police department to grant temporary permits is one of the goals of this legislation.
We'll still let people do it online, but after a moment in time, you can always change it. But as drafted, it's six days in a row, twelve days a year.
Six consecutive days a year, twelve per year.
But they can always seek more. It's not prohibitive. But if you do want more than that, you got to come in and explain what it is. It's not a long process. Again, we started out trying to make life in 2019. We'll do here in recognizing electronic communication. We set up the website, you can do it online. But again, people started abusing it, and we never really had a way to check how many times they were doing it. And we've gotten complaints that people are doing it every five days. They go on the sixth day and sign up for another five, and they sign up for another five. So that's part of, probably the main driver, but we're trying to address some other things as we fix it up.
So again, the board will be asked this evening simply to set up a public hearing date for that proposed local law, and presumably it will be February 6th.
Anything further, Justice?
I have two things, Mayor. I'd like the board to know, and our residents, I was informed by Joe D. Francisco that on January 7th, one of our sanitation workers, in doing his rounds, was going through somebody's backyard. And the resident of the house was actually choking and turning blue. Our sanitation worker, Billy Beck Brower, I think his name is, Billy Doc Brower, did the Heimlich removal, probably saved the guy's life. So I'd like to thank him, number one. And maybe if we can, as a board, do something for him, I'd like to do that as well. Dominic, please let him know it's outstanding stuff. I mean, really, you know, if it wasn't for him, this guy definitely knows what happened. That's one thing. So Joe, please pass that along, and if there's something we can do for him.
Mayor, you may wish to authorize the village administrator to prepare an appropriate letter of condemnation in connection with the event.
Definitely.
And the second item I have, some of our police officers were recognized by New York State. I believe you were there nine minutes, thank you, I could not bear. But on January 4th, Senator Tom presented awards to four of my guys. Sergeant Kevin Riley actually got the Liberty Award from New York State, which is one of the highest awards that somebody can get in New York State for his service to the community. And also Sergeant Riley spent 23 years with the New York Army National Guard and retired as a major. He was deployed in Afghanistan and was injured, and IED blew up while he was on patrol, and he was injured. He was awarded the Bronze Star and Purple Heart, as well as other awards for his deployment. So I'd like to congratulate him on the one. Detective Richard Perdomne received New York State exemplary service to the community proclamation for his 33 years of service, 24 of those years as a youth officer and community officer within the village. And Detective Kevin Madden and Police Officer John Russell also received New York State exemplary service to the community proclamation for their work in apprehending a sexual predator. And I'd like to say congratulations to those guys. And Commissioner, please pass them along.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would also note that the fourth item under new business is the amendment, proposed amendment, of previously issued zoning permit for 5 into Fox Stewart Avenue. And when we deal with that item on the agenda, I would note that village special counsel Tom Lemon is present, and I would anticipate that he would have some remarks on that item when he comes up.
Very well. Any further questions or comments by the justices? All right, let's move along then to citizens' comments on agenda items. If you would like to come up and comment on an item on the agenda, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized. Yes.
Can you hear me, everybody? Andrew DeShumelde, 2020 presidential candidate. I'm just, not answering. Field 7191, Garden City. I'd like to address agenda items 10, 11, and 12. For the vine removal, isn't that something that the parks department and the street department can handle? Or, I don't know what it is, but I'm just, vines, can't they just plumb it down?
Can you answer that?
Oh, they can't? Oh, okay, okay. Because, all right. Well, regarding the St. Paul and having to pay for these things, there are persons who spend $100 million to invest in a single painting. Okay, so there's money out there. So why not open up bids or whatever you're going to do with the building, to, open up the project to the world? Who invest in a project gets to participate in whatever the building becomes. Thus, you have an incentive to invest. Okay? Now, my idea was motion picture studio, okay? Let's say Netflix, YouTube, et cetera. All you hear is that looking for content. They have these screaming things going on. They're looking for content, okay? Now, once set up as a motion picture studio, Garden City can make movies at zero cost. For example, a boardroom meeting. Well, we have the set, we have the actors, okay? And the script can be written by high school students as a group project. That's just an example, where the movies could be made at zero cost, okay? And then you can sell it to Netflix. And then you can make, oh, I don't know, that movie Avatar, which was ridiculous, made billions of dollars. The movie Joker, I saw it, was ridiculous. It made billions of dollars. I mean, I think Garden City, with all the intellect available, can make interesting wholesome movies. And there's places that these movies can be sold, worldwide and locally, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shumelde.
Go for it, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would care to make an agenda comment? Yes, Mr. LaRose?
Good evening, Mr. Rose, 28th Row. I'd like to show my address to you.
I'll be with you too.
I was going to talk on an agenda, because we mentioned about set asleep traffic, but maybe you'll have to wait till later.
Later, please. Later, please, later.
I'd like to ask a quick question. Who was responsible for increases in salary?
Five, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight of them, yeah.
Did you put in requests for a certain increase in salary?
We're not going to discuss how we go about, so it's personal matter.
Okay, because I'm just questioning it, because it's all about the double-digit increase. And I know when I used to work, I was lucky to get across a living increase. So I'm just wondering how the, how the...
Because what happens is, is that what you don't take into account is you don't take into account the length of time that the ratings deals with, and you don't take into account any other factors that are involved. So what we do is we take that into account. So in other words, all you're seeing is the change from one number to another. But there's a lot of, lot of other parts in there, which we're not going to go into.
Well, I mean, if you have a review process, I mean, what you're doing is answering my question.
Sure.
That's all I'm... We have a review process, we have making it more formal. But yes, there is a process. We all get a room, blah, 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 start with our village administrator. We have very intense discussions, we have human resource as well now. So there is a process, and it's going to get more formal.
And just to let you know that Mrs. Rose of Black has been working diligently on putting together a process, which is one of the things that this board wants to have and has been talking about for years. And once we make certain adjustments, we will then have it in place, which is something that we're very happy to have.
Yeah, so apparently in the past, you had nothing like that.
Well, that's not accurate.
It was probably less organized, the conversation was still that.
Yeah, and administrative type information. Okay, all right, well, that'd be safe. My next speaker will be...
Yes.
I'm Maureen Delacona, 105 New York Park Road. Good evening, the mayor and the trustees. I wanted to ask on the St. Paul's stabilization bid that is going to be recommended not to accept, I'm wondering how the delay in awarding that bid would have an effect on the following processes, which is the payment and also decisions about uses.
It's very possible. It's very possible that it would, but...
I mean, is it, is there a going to be, is there a long process with the delay in putting together a new bid to go out again to contract?
I don't think that it takes such a long time to prepare a bid, does it?
Well, once, once we, once we reconfigure the bids, we'll re-adaptize it again for probably another three weeks and, and hopefully get more bidders and a, and a more reasonable price and move forward. But we can still move forward with the, with the window replacement. Let me stop for us from doing that. And all the vines. And, and we're also preparing to outbid for the removal of the stained glass windows and have it put in storage. So then it should be out of the way shortly. And hopefully we'll be able to move forward on that portion of the project.
Good, and it does sound like it's too long of the length, that's good. And a second question was, I was just curious, do, did you do any follow-through with the, you said there were five or six contractors that came through the walkthrough, but only one bid? Is there any follow-up to find out why they may have not put anything?
Yes, CNY actually did some follow-up with them, and that's why we're going to, they're going to revisit the bid specs and...
Based on, I guess, some of the information?
Some, based on the feedback they received.
Okay, thank you.
Would there be anybody else who would like to comment on agenda items? Yes.
Good evening, Dominic Lunti, 125 Poplar Street. If the town were to cancel the order for the filters, that, water filters, would there be a financial penalty to the town?
No, they should not be. We've not put any deposits down, it's strictly, they're on order right now.
Great, thank you.
Maybe anyone else who would like to question something on the agenda? Fine, then what we will do is we will move forward and we will, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of meeting of December 12, 2019. John Delaney moves it, a second. John, Brian Joyne moves it, all those in favor?
I understand, was it at the meeting?
All right, so it's a seven-zero? Yeah, all right. And then we will move down into the formal agenda under new business. We're going to set a series of dates for work that we want to discuss at, at a following meeting. And I think we took care of admirably the code of ethics, and I think we also took care of the, the law to amend overnight parking limitations. So I think we start...
I'd like to move, I want to agree to very discuss them.
We have already discussed them, yeah.
Outside of the civil law meeting, we can on February 6th, abundant three, and March 27th, if you can add sales date.
Very good, okay. Is that, is that, seconded? All those in favor? Motion moves seven-zero? No, eight-zero. C and N is. All right, we are, before we proceed on the next item, I think that Mr. Lemon may wish to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item, the board has a rather long draft resolution, which we've circulated for consideration, and I'd just like to try to cut through the legalese and give a quick setting for what this is about. In July 2018, after a lengthy process, the village granted a special permit to authorize proceeding with a proposed development at 555 Stewart Avenue for multifamily residents, including affordable housing. In the event, in the period of time since then, the property has been sold to a new owner. The new owner has proposed a revision to the plans. The use remains the same, it's still multiple residents, and it still complies with the affordable housing requirements. But it does require an amendment of the approval that was granted in July 2018. Kevin Walsh, representing the developer, is here tonight to tell you what the changes in the proposed plan are. And I don't want to skip this number and present his case for him. But the resolution before you, although very long, is actually very simple. The proposed use of the property does not comply with the village's RT zoning unless this board grants a special permit for it. The board granted a special permit for it in July 2018. But that approval was predicated on a particular set of plans, which would then go through the entire normal review process in the village. Whatever boards had to act on it, zoning, planning, architectural review, building department, and so on. So when the revised plans came in, those revised plans do not match the plans that the board approved in July 2018. The board is now being asked to approve an amendment to that resolution so the developer can proceed with the new revised plans, which will still have to go through that entire review process, Board of Appeals, Architectural Review, Building Department, and so on, planning. And it will eventually come back to this board for a final approval. So in, despite the lengthy resolution that's before you, that's all the resolution does. If the board sees fit, it will allow the developer to proceed on the revised plans as opposed to the... And Mr. Walsh can present you the differences in...
Tom, before Mr. Walsh, what we're really saying is, all we're doing is reapproving the use of the property, not what's on the property.
That's correct.
Not the building. It still has to go before all the other boards.
That's correct.
So, so we're basically clear on that. We're not approving the new buildings that are called, how the buildings are going to be, whatever. That has to go through our various committees. We're just continuing the approval for the use...
For multiple family residents with the required affordable housing, as subject to the normal review process for all the plans, as justice was done with the previous set of plans.
So the height, FAR, materials, that all goes through normal?
Yes, you're not approving any of that. And if it goes through the process successfully, it will come back to you for the final approval.
And still the same number of units.
I'll let Mr. Walsh discuss what the changes are. I think, I think, I think the answer that in most cases is there are less than there were before, fewer than before, not, not more.
So why does all that have to be in that resolution?
Well, the resolution is to meet various legal requirements that the village has, and spelling out exactly what you're doing, what you did previously and what you are doing going forward. But the effect of it is simply to say we're repeating the approval of the special permit that was granted previously, but with a different set of proposed plans to go through the review process. If approved through all that normal review process, then to come back to you for a final approval. I don't know if you want Mr. Walsh to give you some...
I was hoping you'd come in.
Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, and happy new year to all. And thank you, Mr. Lemon, for the, the explanation. I concur with everything that was presented or indicated by Mr. Lemon. So this is an application, and it's simple, simple, and we hope it's simple, for you to just extend or accept an amended preliminary site plan. So there are certain changes in the site plan. We believe that they're modest changes, but all of them, we believe, are improvements in the site plan. But first, I want to, because you don't know these folks, I want to introduce you, the board, to the team from Southern Land. This is Dustin Downey. Dustin is the senior vice president for Multiple Dwell Development. His office is in New York. Southern Land, if you Google Southern Land, you'll see Southern Land is a large company, a big, a large footprint all over the country. Dustin controls or handles the New York and the Northeast area. He's here with Rebecca Palmer, who is on his development team in this area. Joe Rossi is also here. Joe is the acquisitions director for the Northeast. And the other, Kevin Walsh, is here with the team here. He's from VHB, he's the principal in the engineering firm that actually represents the developer here. So if there are technical, if there are technical questions, we feel we could answer any of them now. So the, as I said, if you need to know more about Mr. Downey's organization, you can, you can talk to him, or you can ask questions about him. The essential nature of the changes here that we alluded to by Mr. Lemon were, are basically, it's the same property, the same number of units, 150 units, we haven't thought to change that. It's 10% are the affordable. Southern Land is fully versed in what that means in the village to create affordable housings and rules. We presented you with floor plans showing the distribution of those units throughout the, the floor plans, relatively randomly distributed all over the, the, the project. The building, significant changes or changes, we, their, their vision of this building was much better on that site with two buildings. So we've been able to shrink the second building, make it smaller, increase the setbacks along Raymond Court and throughout the project, and, and not have one elongated building running north and south from Stewart Avenue all the way to the back. And in so doing, the second building is a smaller building, which creates a front on Stewart Avenue, which is a stately-looking building with a tunnel through it that will allow for ingress and ingress into what is behind. You have seen, you've seen the site plan, and Mayor, I'm more than happy if you're ready to put it up if people want, if it's needed tonight. But I'll just, and go through it in a much more detailed way if that's what the board wants. But I think Mr. Lemon pointed out that the purpose of tonight, or tonight, is to really allow us to get to the other boards. The other boards, a couple of them have accidentally on our part witnessed or seen the site plan, and they know that they've spoken well of it. But a couple of other changes in it are, we reduced the number of units in the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units in the project. There's 150 units. We've got less three-bedroom and less two-bedroom. Not affordable, the affordable remain the same, the allocation, but we've reduced the number of market-driven two- and three-bedroom units because we were making a little bit larger one-bedroom units. That's a function of the constraints of the property. And when Southern Land got involved, they said, "These, these two bedrooms are not going to be marketable for what exists on Long Island today and what seniors would like to see and what young people would like to see." They also increased the amenity space within the building and some of the amenity space in the exterior of the building, because that's what's going to work, that's what's able to be marketed, that's what's going to be successful. Southern Land builds, acquires, develops, and actually maintains their property. So you will be dealing with Southern Land on this project if it gets built for many, many years, because that's their, that's their ownership and that's the way they function. They're not looking to be other than long-term contributors and investors and taxpayers for this village. So the, the plan, we think, is, is better. We, Dustin Downey also made a recent decision before the last submission to switch from a wood frame construction, which is permissible for this size building in the state of New York, to a steel construction. That was based upon dialogue we had with the fire early on, not recently, but early on, with the fire department, the fire chief, is what they like to see here. And with the planning commission for the village, the experts in this village said we'd really like to see that. So rather than haggle about that issue, Dustin made a decision to leave ahead with a steel construction building. So we think it's a much better site plan, as I indicated, Mayor. We're, we're prepared to put it up and go through it in very specific detail. The resolution tonight would ultimately have us go to the other boards, your expert boards, and obviously, there might be some changes made. So you'd be viewing something tonight that might slightly change. But those changes will not be driven by us. They will be your experts saying, "We need these changes in here." So you'll be seeing that when it comes back. You ultimately hold final settlement approval, and that would be in front of this board and in front of the public. And we, we, we're looking forward to getting an opportunity to get to your, your expert boards.
Could, could we also make a commitment that they'll, the space between Raymond Court and the building, that, that whole space for the, I believe, that parking now, that you put some kind of landscaping to block that?
You mean, I'm sorry, trustee, do you mean...
On our property or the property that's in your station?
Well, I would, I would...
On your property, we were absolutely committed around the entire property, and you can see that on the fly-through. Our entire property will have a full hedge that will help buffer us from Raymond Court and from us. We're also having a, a wall in between, if you have seen the site plan, in between our pool area and that section of parking to, to avoid any wasteful wishing from... I'm sorry, I just said, trustee, I don't know whether you're speaking now or when we get into this, but two things I'd say about that. One is...
I would like, probably both.
Okay. The plan that will be reviewed, and we have to go through, Architects will decide, we have full landscape. We have full detail in the package, full detail. They, they are substantial.
I just want to make sure there's some kind of...
Yes, I would like to say we make it, we're going to make it profitable, we're going to make ourselves profitable. We are going to produce something that is very, very usable for both Raymond Court and this building in Jersey, and not a customer. We have recently cleaned, I don't know if anyone really knows, this is a, it's a site that's been sitting for many years. We cleaned the front out not long ago. We plan on doing a few more things, and soon as we can get going, fencing it off and watching the track.
Yeah, I had similar concerns as well, because when I was looking at the, at the pictures, there are two things I noted. The first thing is that you now have an outdoor pool that you didn't have before. I'm concerned about the residents that live on Raymond Court. The second thing is that that building, now that you have two buildings, that building is closer to Raymond Court than the other one was before.
The front of the north building?
The north, well, the inside building, not the one that's on Stewart. The one that's, on the inside building, that building where the pool is, is closer to Raymond Court than what the original building was. So I'm just saying, here is the...
The set effects are larger over there.
Well, they, I, I, I can't see how that could not be closer. The reason for this is because the original building flooded itself all the way again, all the way against the bushes where the drive, where the road was. And this one now has parking between the building and the bushes, so you have to be at least 20, 30 feet close.
What I think may have changed for you is that building, remember, we were trying to get all the square footage in that building, because that building was much, like, a little bit faster than our new building, which is thinner.
Those, those, just my concern.
And, and obviously, you have expert boards, that's the concern of them, particularly as it relates to the pool. And the dialogue we had with them, front... And the dialogue we had with them, front and center is an issue, folks on Raymond Court, how is that gonna work? But as this board knows, in 301 Franklin Development, if this board approved on Franklin Avenue, there's a pool there, and so kind of necessity in these days to have the availability of a pool. And I don't think the villagers have complaints, I've heard any complaints about that. So we have to work with your planning commission, your architectural done.
That's the same situation. Do they have the railroad tracks that they have?
No, all these, yeah.
Yeah, the layout, nowhere near the same. It's not even the same.
We're happy to share your thought through work.
I think, really, that that's kind of premature. I'd rather see after the. I mean, to see it now is nice, but I mean, I'd really like to see when it goes to all the boards, what it's gonna look like. And I think it would make more sense, not that we're not interested, but I think to look at it now is very premature. That would be my recommendation, is that we do not take that time now.
So are we finished then? Do we have any further questions, the trustees on this issue?
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate to.
I would move that, the idea that we're doing approval for the use, not for the building or anything else, just for the use that we approved back in July of 2012.
Consider the resolution drafted by special counsel.
And the second? Manu, Justin Manu, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that, please, unanimous, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, another consent calendar is next. However, we receive word with respect to item seven, that the individual who would have been retained as a peremptive prosecutor has made a decision to find that spot. Therefore, I would recommend that item seven be removed from the consent calendar and removed from the agenda altogether. Moved in second in a special motion, here we now, next is 559.
And I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'd like to just ask a question, ma'am. I see the third bunch of session is on Dave's, Dave and his dear to a few of us. I also understand, I also understand, we can find, I further understand that some of the village officials are not available on each side of that. So I'm just wondering if there's any other date that we could pick other than the 17th of March?
That would be a cop.
A good day for anybody, isn't it?
Especially since we.
Or, or you might have turned it, or the alternative is to have it on the 17th. And we had, and we had a K. We could probably get more than that.
Your highest attempt.
Highest session ever. There's the whole idea for it. I read, that was an excellent, I like that. Have you guys ruined your budget on your?
No, we, we used to do a Saturday here and there. I don't know if people are, I know we've been trying to avoid that.
Right, can we do one? Or what's the 16th or the 18th? Yeah, let's do it early, let's do it around 6:30. Yeah, can we set it at 6:30? And give us enough time to have it. I have to see who, you did that.
So do we have this move's approval?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so we change the 17th, 19th.
Subject to that, subject to that change, I would move the consent. Subject to the consent, subject to that change. I would move.
It's okay, it's an Italian American, I mean. I was an Italian, I'm a, I'm a Zed. It's okay. I'll be bringing Zepleys, cheerful if yours wasn't getting approved, it's real up there.
Subject to that change.
There are motions to approve the amendment.
With the Zepleys, yes.
Trustee Delaney has made that motion.
Trustee Hayer, okay, trustee Delaney, trustee Hayer, all those in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. All right. Now we will move to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Oros.
Just have a little comment on the setting sheet problem. One of the things that's really lacking in that is the left turn signal going north on Franklin. But as soon as the light turns red and people standing there, they may go left turn. The indicators for pedestrians are positive. Now pedestrians are walking across the street while people are still trying to make the left turn. The light's been seen there, is that because the light is red and traffic is stopped by a sound, I've seen a number of people making illegal left turn into 7th South parking lot, but rather than go on. Both instances aren't very good. So I'm wondering whether we can apply any help on county, because I'm saying it's a county law, to put a left signal there and go.
Since I've been on board here, I've heard for twelve years, we have thrown that back and forth numerous times to county, and that's a no-no.
Sometimes you get new administration, you get new ideas, you get new people. I know, believe me, I've been here for three years and we've been trying.
Well, one of the other thoughts that I had is that, you know, different way to skin a cat, is that in New York City, if you look at the lights now, when the light, when it's time for you to cross, what happens is the crosswalk for the pedestrians goes first. And now pedestrians can actually walk across the street. And then about five or seven seconds later, the light then turns green for cars to go. So is it possible for us to investigate, if they have that in New York City? I can't imagine we couldn't have that in Nassau County. But we can add where the pedestrians have that right of what, they can stop walking before that turn, it might help alleviate that. Or that, you know?
But then, but then you don't give any chance for people to make left turn on the 7th, unless they go through that parking lot.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying, I'm simply saying, if the pedestrians aren't there, it's not an issue with people making left turn.
One of the problems is, because of the railroad crossing, they're worried about people being backed up into the railroad crossing. That's historically one of the things they haven't told us about.
Yes, they, they went, I really went out there with everybody, even a couple of times, and they, the site, they say the accidents, the accidents that they reviewed are now attributed to the local government, but that's the base.
But you know that there is a problem, right? When the light turns red, you assume there are lanes that, maybe that pedestrians are going to walk.
We actually asked them to look at it, we initiated by the board.
Tell them to look at it again, so they can prepare for this. Okay, thank you.
I, yes. Mr. Manu?
Thank you. Me again. Regarding what you just talked about, you know, just keep building up new apartments, and that should help in the traffic situation, you know, more visible traffic, sucking more water out of the ground, more crime, more pollution, more taxes, less space to grow food. And Nassau County becoming Queens County. So just keep building the buildings, see what catches. As far as me as president, let me just go across my healthcare. I'm telling you, this is not the best thing you've ever heard. Keep Social Security the way it is, where you pay through the system, until you're 65, you get Medicare, okay? Until you're 65, you have a separate additional plan that you negotiate with Medicare, okay? When you head a household, you head a household of family, and you're negotiating premium coverage, the comfortables, the home pays. And by doing it with Medicare, you're not paying for the executive salaries of a private insurance company, which is billions of dollars, okay? You're not paying for the return on investment, which you get with private companies, that's billions of dollars. And also, the documentation, the data, and all the buildings, you have the cost of buildings, the mortgage, the rent, taxes, maintenance, you're not paying for any of that. So it's extremely, extremely cheap, right? Now, if you want to have private healthcare companies, fine, but the citizens negotiate with Medicare for a very reasonable purchase, okay? As far as like what Trump is doing, killing that guy, question, what do we need to do this to begin with? Why, okay? They got oil, they got water, they got land, they got everything. If you just leave it alone, they would be extremely, extremely rich. They do not need the United States for anything. They're not spreading democracy, you're limited, but that place looks like after all of our bombs have blown that place up, okay? The Federal Reserve, they keep pumping money into the system, into the banks, Federal Reserve, okay? What happened in like 1929 is, after Federal Reserve pumped all this money in, then they just took it all out. And then we had a recession, or no, depression, okay? And then just then, just then having economy, we went to World War II. Now, if we have another war, I mean, it's gonna be the end, okay? So you have to see where we're going. I got my agenda items, criminal justice, and I have indoor crime, war on drugs.
I'm sorry, but you are, you used up your time.
Okay. And you are bored, so you're not interested, not interested.
Mayor, I have a motion to adjourn the session.
To discuss what the bargaining and potential rights.